You have one of those at home, don't you?
I do, I got two of them. Yeah, I kinda like them. We're gonna call the work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman to order now for May the 8th. As usual, we have an opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on this agenda. And during citizen comments, and also we're able to take comments during items on the agenda. So Susan Joyner and Lucille Rosenthal wanted to come up. Hi ladies. We can pass those around for you. Twenty-two. Okay. Go ahead ladies, introduce yourself and we're gonna give you a couple of minutes.
Okay, y'all probably know Lucille. I'm Susan Joyner. We own land on Boyd Mill Avenue and we wish to enter the following statement into the minutes for this work session. We oppose the passage of the consideration of Resolution 2018-34 for the following reasons. The resolution is directly tied to Contract 2018-0029 with trace construction for the purpose of recapturing funds being given to that contractor for an existing gravity sewer system to be upgraded solely for his project at this time. The resolution would not be needed if the aforementioned contract had not been put in place. The online BOMA agenda gave the name of this resolution item as sanitary sewer capacity fee model, which implies that this same strategy will be applied in the future to similar or not projects. As owners of two of the parcels mentioned in the resolution, we oppose future requirements, in this particular instance, recapture amounts that a developer must pay to the city tied to our property and we know that the dollar amount can increase without notice. We have been advised by legal counsel that the resolution can affect the future value of our land as a developer may choose to acquire other acreages that is not so encumbered. BOMA and landowners installed a grinder pump sewer system several years ago that will not support additional development. An upgrade to the existing gravity sewer system in the area would have been the correct solution then. We conclude this action is setting a precedent for incentive contracts with developers who are not seeking those funds because they desire to build in beautiful Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize for sewer being misspelled in that second to last thing. I didn't mean sever, I mean it.
And so the date again is...
This is item twenty, relates to item twenty on your voting session tonight. And we have requested, based on these concerns, but also I think we had one other property owner contact us with some questions that we would like to defer to the June 12th meeting.
Workshop and voting both.
We were just gonna put it on the voting session, if you'd like it on the work session, we can put it there.
I'd put it on the work session again.
We've discussed it a couple times, but we're glad to bring it back.
Well, the other property owner hasn't had a chance. So if you've been, that's two. If you've been contacted by a third, that third one has not had a chance to have any public comment. So I will put it back on the work session and on the voting session for the 12th then.
To my, yeah, okay, that's no problem. To my knowledge, there's only one property owner that had not, you did not have contact with. But we're glad to do that. We'll put it on both.
Did you send a notification? We never received.
We've spoken with different property owners, we'll make sure that others have...
But we initiated ours.
Yeah, but we spoke with you after the previous meeting you were present at and we're glad to follow up with folks.
And I understand that a notification is coming, but the...
Yes.
Other people may, our point is, other people may come when they get notified.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight we have a presentation and status update by the Franklin Housing Commission. Gentlemen, welcome.
How we doing today?
Tell us what you've been doing.
Awesome. I'm John Bessler, this is Jeffrey Carruth. We're the Chair and Vice Chair of the Housing Commission. So we thank you for this opportunity to tell you about some of our activities and our plans. The Housing Commission is charged by chartering the bylaws to educate, advise, and assist both BOMA and the community on housing issues and trends. So in order to implement those, the first thing that we do is educate the community. And this year we're planning on doing that, and we've already started, making presentations to HOA and community groups to talk about the need for very wide range of housing options in the community and talk about those people that in our community and that wanna come to our community that need those things. Then we have examples from young professionals, we have of course, public servants, teachers, and the people wanting to downsize. So we gave a presentation to the... Thank you, it just ran through my mind and kept going. Fieldstone Farms. And that community is almost a prime example of what we would like to see a lot more of. And that is a very wide range of housing options from single bedroom apartments and townhomes to very large homes. So if someone in that community wanted to downsize, they had many of options to stay in the community. So we're promoting that across our entire city. That is the kinds of options that we wanted to promote and have available. The second thing is advise builders and developers about land that is available in the city for development, for purchase, to build affordable housing and different housing options on that. And we have also promoted the Roundup Program in the Water Department to help reduce fees and permit costs in order to keep the costs down so that we can have more homes available at the initial price points. Thirdly, assist neighborhoods in maintaining their currents, safe and clean areas. And we do this several times a year throughout entire community areas around the city. And we collect tons of rubbish and discarded items and so forth that the homeowner may not be able to take to the proper disposal area or get them even to the street. So we have a bunch of volunteers and go out and help the community to maintain a safe and clean atmosphere throughout the neighborhoods.
We had the opportunity, several of the committee members, to go to the Fair Housing Conference that was last month. And it was great to be there because, as you know, April 11th was the 50th year of the Fair Housing Act. That was commenced seven days after assassination Martin Luther King. You know, most people know that the Fair Housing Act is the elimination of housing discrimination, but there's actually two parts to that act. And the second part is the promotion of residential integration. And that's something that really holds true to the commission that we're trying to do to make sure that the integration within the community is at the forefront to create housing options for people. The thing that also wanna make sure we realize, there's eighteen commission, committee members on our commission. And they're all appointed from you all. We have retired social workers, we have landscape architects, we have representative from WCAR, we have attorneys, we have nonprofits, we have a lot of people working really hard and diligently trying to move forward on some of the things. And one thing I did want to say on when John mentioned about advising builders and developers of housing or land available, our commission has identified ten properties that we are looking at to try to let those builders know that there's an option for you to move forward to create these options here in City of Franklin.
That's our plans for this year and to go forward, and we're happy if you have any questions or...
Hold on, Berger.
The ten properties that you've identified or lots, places where it could possibly be built, how would you purchase that or will the developer purchase that or do you have a plan to buy that?
That's a great question, thanks so much for asking. We're working with our partners like Community Housing and other nonprofits to identify and execute that. It would not be the Franklin Housing Commission purchasing that. We're just gonna help people identify opportunities that they can move forward on.
So is your plan that you hope to have other entities help you or help purchase those lots or that parcel of land so that then the builders can come in and actually build a more affordable house without having to also purchase the land? Is that the, is that what you're hoping?
Well, the builder would have to purchase the land, but we're trying to do it where we set it up where we can identify options for builders so they can move forward on their project.
We anticipate that we have a number of builders as well as the nonprofits in the community that are interested in, and they might not know about these properties. So it's our goal is that we would bring this to their attention. And that if they act on it or not act on it, we can't make them, but we hope that those that have come to us and worked with us want to build housing options at the lower end and so that we can have more options available. But we're just gonna bring it to their attention. We don't anticipate us purchasing property. We anticipate that we'll make them aware of the funds available to reduce, help reduce the fees that they have to pay. But that's about where we're standing.
Well, John, you and I had talked one time about possibly finding out ways to raise money to... See, one of the biggest hurdles to me, now this is just my opinion, but one of the biggest hurdles I see in building housing that you can keep more affordable is in our county, we astronomically, you know, land, the land costs have gone up astronomically. Then, so if a builder comes in or a developer comes in and buys that piece of property, they also then have to purchase that property and they have to build it. And that's, then it's usually out of hand as far as trying to find a more reasonable priced housing. So I was just hoping that through this identifying the land, that we could also identify ways to... I mean, this community, let's face it, this community gives to everything. We have fundraisers for every single thing you can think of, but I've really never seen major fundraising out there for doing something like this where you could go out and do fundraising to buy these pieces of land. So I was just wondering if this is one of your hurdles in identifying this land? Is this also a hurdle that you're gonna have to get over?
It definitely is a hurdle and we look forward to working with you, assisting us on trying to raise those funds.
I think, I think that's, I would encourage you, and I'm glad to speak with you about that, but I just see that as one of the things. But I'm glad that you have, really glad that you have taken the steps to identify the parcels because I think that's so important to be proactive in trying to find those.
We're hoping and planning that our education efforts raises the community awareness of this. And then I think then there might be some impetus for fundraising of some sort. We know we've got a lot of issues that we have to address across the community. But when we have talked one-on-one with people, everybody is for options. But when we talk about locations, we have less support around the community. So we want to make sure that everybody is fully aware of what it is that we're attempting to do to make our community more diverse in terms of the housing options that are available.
All right, thank you.
I got Alderman Martin followed by Alderman Bransford, then Alderman Barnhill.
Are these ten parcels available for sale to developers?
We've not reached out to those individuals, we've just identified those parcels.
Okay, and we may need to keep that secret now. There's people always out there looking for land. A couple of things, Alderman, you had mentioned, you know, fundraising. One thing that every citizen in Franklin can do today is join the Roundup. Those nickels and dimes can add up. You may not be able to purchase a whole house or a whole lot, but that will be an incentive. So everybody in, under the sound of my voice, can contribute today with that fundraising without having to go out and put up a tent, okay? But yeah, the parcels, because everybody's eager to find land to build for major profit. So it's gonna be very important how you walk that line to get someone to purchase that that is not looking to maximize what they can do with that property. You know, subdivide it, make two lots or put a McMansion or something on it, you know, those kinds of things. So it's gonna be interesting how you walk that line to make that happen.
Alderman Barnhill.
I guess a couple of weeks ago we had the Hill discussion. And at that particular time, we'll make sure that I understand totally what you are capable of doing, not what you wanted to, what you're capable of doing. Habitat can build, can they not? Community Housing Partnership can build. Hard Bargain can build. Can you build?
We cannot build and that's why we partner with those other identities.
United Real Estate, go ahead.
So I guess if we were, if we were looking, if this was down to the Hill property, for instance, I'm sure that's one of the ten that you've identified. And Hard Bargain came before us with a presentation that said, "We wanna purchase it for this amount and we see thirty-seven homes being built up there." And they're, they're nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet. And we are looking at this particular price range and this particular deed restrictions and this particular income level to be able to move into this particular house. Where do you function in that? Do you?
Well, I think we support them, we would do whatever we can.
Well, we do too.
Yeah. I don't know, from our charter and in our bylaws, we can't do any more than advising and supporting and educating. And so unless you wanna change how we operate, you know, that's sort of the rules that we work with.
You're similar to other commissions we have here. We have sustainability, we have historic, they don't buy property, they don't build houses. They make recommendations.
But, but we have three very capable organizations now, I believe, in Community Housing Partnership, Habitat, and the Hard Bargain.
Franklin Housing.
And Franklin, and, oh yes, Franklin Housing Authority. So you've got four that are capable, capable and have done this and are doing this. And I'm just, if I was looking at, somebody making a presentation to me for something or other, it would be one of them or a combination of them or a combination of those four. If you're advising, I could probably go out and look at several vacant pieces of property someplace. Matter of fact, I'm thinking of two or three right now.
And the one thing that I do wanna say is that Steve Murray is on our Housing Commission and Derwin Jackson is also. So we do have those expertise under our umbrella that we communicate with.
Right, and those organizations each have some constraints and considerations for people to get homes in there. So what this is, is a little broader program. So I mean, I think if you refer back just recently to the Economic Development Survey, there was like seventy percent of the respondents said that there is a need for more housing options, particularly in the lower price range. So you know, the Housing Commission did an informal survey about eighteen months ago that found the same thing by talking to businesses along the interstate. It is an issue and then that's why we wanna continue to talk about it throughout the community.
Well, I think it's an issue because we sit here and I don't wanna get back to the beer, but we sit and listen to a business that's expanding from twenty to forty, and I'm sitting here thinking, where is the twenty coming from? They got twenty, but they need twenty more. Where are they coming from?
Forty-five minutes away.
Alderman Blaine.
I just wanted to make a comment that I don't know how long the task force that turned into the commission, I don't know the tenure exact of how long it's been going on, but I just wanna thank you 'cause I know it's a difficult job to beat your head against the wall to try to be out of the box to solve something that's such a big deal. And I think Kathleen has played a huge part of carrying that torch. And I hope we get there one day and try to figure out some type of solution. But I know that the Housing Commission tries very hard and I appreciate your efforts and I understand having all the different professionals and your passion, it's important. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's an eight man there. I'm surprised y'all didn't correct me, but I skipped over item one, which is gonna be deferred until June the 26th. So my apologies for overlooking that 'cause I know y'all were worried about why I didn't look at one. So we appreciate y'all coming.
Continue to let us know how we can help. We created this commission and you report to us, so let us know how we, the eight, nine of us, can help.
And we wanna thank you all for your continued support. And I'm glad you brought that up because we have a number of commissions and we're gonna be hearing from them periodically about some of the things they're doing. Like the most recent one that we appointed is the Public Art Commission. And they're doing a lot of work already. I had a little briefing the other day, but they're not quite to the point where they can bring us a report. So that's great. Number three is event permit for wind down Main Street, any question about that one? Next is event permit for prayer breakfast at the Park at Herlinsdale Farm. Any questions about that? United Williamson? A new event?
I kept thinking it was a typo, it's like, is it united? No, it's unite, right.
That's great, that's good.
Number five is event permit for Porch Fest. Number six is certificate of compliance for wine and grocery stores for ALD.
It's a renewal.
Renewal.
A bunch of those coming through these days.
Next is procurement award to Symmetra Life Insurance of Enfield, Connecticut for voluntary group life insurance with accidental death and dismemberment.
These are entirely paid for by employees that choose them. So they're totally voluntary, additional benefits, they're funded by the employee. We just serve as a vehicle for those services to be offered, so...
For the agent to come in and make you feel.
Yeah, we go out every few years for pricing and bids on that and that's what this reflects.
Does our HR team go over those benefits or does the benefit firm that we hire come in?
Well, we facilitate that process, but it's really the, it's really more of a direct relationship between the vendor and the employee. But we provide the vehicle for them to see them and decide whether they wanna add it or not.
Number eight is procurement award to Automated Collection Services, ACSI of Nashville for bad debt collection services. Any question about that one? Next is Resolution 2018-35, Resolution of the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the City of Franklin Employees Pension Plan, providing a cost of living adjustment to the monthly benefit for retired recipients.
Let me just comment on this briefly. This is sort of our annual process. We have employees under the city's Employee Pension Program, which is now a closed program. But we do review that every year annually and make a calculation whether there should be a cost of living adjustment. We look at standard calculations around CPI and use as our gauge and we generally go March to March when we look at that. This is a resolution that's on your voting session tonight that approves our doing that calculation, which is about 2.1% and us moving forward with implementing that for adjustment starting in July of this year.
And people do appreciate you're doing this in a timely manner.
Yeah, we always try to make sure, yeah, that's why it's on both agendas tonight so we have as much time as possible to get this done, get with the bank who provides the administrative support and get this in place for our retirees by July.
Number 10 is an ordinance 2018-06 to be entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the zoning ordinance City of Franklin, Tennessee to amend various sections of the sign regulations pertaining to temporary signs and adding a new temporary sign type for temporary multi-story building developments in progress signs.
These are, these are project signs especially, three stories or taller buildings and just kind of let you know what's coming in terms of a larger, larger building. I think we talked about it at a joint workshop a couple of months ago.
We talked about it in January at work session and again at the March joint workshop, but it's exactly what Eric said.
Are there some of them out already?
Yes.
Yes.
I did notice one of those we talked about.
It's been a practice for a while.
Move their sign from the building to like a trailer on the ground. I was like, I guess they're waiting for us to...
I've seen some others that are not.
Put it back up.
I think I've seen some already, but anyway.
Any other questions, Alderman?
It says here, be limited to one per building. What if you have a really large building and on one side you've got a sign? And what if on the other side, say, and I'm not suggesting they do this, but I'm saying like maybe one of the glass office buildings that Pat Emery has. We have Schneider up there, okay? What if on the other side, there's another major company in there and they want their name on the other side of the building? I have no problem with that because they're, you know, it's side by side with two big names on the side of the building. You've got a large building, it's a large conference.
This amendment would only allow for one as temporary. But this is Teresa with our Building and Neighborhood Services Department and she applies the sign ordinance as currently written for permanent signs as well. And she could probably speak to some of that. But we did write this for just one because it seemed like there was some concern over the number, number of signs allowed, because they could also have freestanding temporary signage as well. And that's, I don't know the exact number and how that's calculated, Teresa may know.
I was wondering if we could put something in here that if you have a large enough building, I wouldn't even know where to start with that, but at least it says here three stories, but I would think...
Now this is, excuse me a second, this is for temporary signs, kinda like the banner that was...
You're only doing temporarys on this? But it said...
These are temporary signs.
These would have to be removed before or after the certificate of occupancy issued.
I don't, okay, sorry, my, my bad.
On permanent signs, Teresa, we do allow...
Yeah, you can have one square foot or linear foot of signs. It doesn't matter how many companies are represented in that, as long as they keep within the square feet, they're allowed.
And there's a...
So you could have a sign on each side of a large building.
Yeah, okay, so is that limited to how many signs though?
It's one per building side, you can have a sign on all fours.
Per side of the building?
Per side, yes.
Okay, all right.
This is just while it's going up.
This, this, this...
Yes. This is about temporary signs, but Alderman Burger had asked something more on permanent, and I was just having Teresa reflect what the permanent provides for.
Well, listen, I'm confused now, because I'm seeing, I'm standing here, or sitting here, looking at this and says temporary. Right in front of my face, I'm like, what?
So remind me again, what was the issue? Were people just leaving up these temporary signs too long?
They're not allowed. They're not.
They're not allowed.
So we're allowing for.
Okay, okay.
So for a building of three stories or more, we only allow ground, freestanding temporary signage, and this would allow them to actually put a banner up on that third story. But it wouldn't be able to go above the roof line or anything like that, or be illuminated for the temporary signage.
Good.
No, no.
Thank you.
We'll move on to eleven then. Number eleven is Amendment Number Five to Professional Services Agreement, contract with CDM Smith for the Mack Hatcher Extension Project from, for a cost of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. This is.
This is, this is essentially an update for some, some adjustments that have been made in the plan, allows it to be ready for bidding. And basically, this is just an update that will be funded by TDOT, because we've done our local participation that we agreed on.
Any, any news about date?
Well, we are hearing that it all revolves around a piece of property and the classification of that property and assigning a value to it. And they essentially changed the use from a permanent easement to a temporary construction easement, which reduced the value. So TDOT believes they can save somewhere around three million dollars by doing that. So they're going through that process of updating the appraisal for that. We don't know whether the property owner will agree to that value, so that may cause it to go through the court system, which means bidding likely going at the end of the year. So we've lost close to.
One day, one day.
Close to a year on the bidding, ten months on the bidding with this. This change and this difference. So, you know, TDOT's judgment is it's worth the savings, and, you know, it is their project, so we respect that.
But it, that doesn't necessarily mean we're happy.
Exactly.
It is, it is, otherwise, it's, it's pretty much ready to go in terms of bidding. This is the issue that needs to be resolved. So this is really some cleanup and gets us moving, so.
Number twelve, Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-six, authorizing the use of the FY two thousand nineteen on-call annual contract for pavement, pavement preservation.
If you're having a deja vu moment that you saw this last time, two weeks ago, you did vote on it, you approved it. We looked at it again as it was written, and it was written in a way that you could interpret that we could not start using that contract till July one, the new fiscal year. We'd like to be able to use it the last two months of this fiscal year. So we touched base with the contractor. We all got in agreement that we can do this as a fourteen-month contract, not a twelve-month contract. So that's really all this does, is cleans up that language and lets Joe and his team start using this service right away. So that was really our intent, and the, the language got caught up in a twelve-month versus a fourteen-month, and this clarifies that.
And there are funds available.
Just ready to get out there and go.
Any of potholes?
I'm sure. You know, whenever you were talking about sealing and keep, trying to keep the roads working longer without having major work, I just wondered, in big parking lots, would that be worthwhile to, you know, the, the people that have big parking lots? I mean, I'm just curious, not.
Could be.
Same, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have more wear and tear out on our roadways?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But it, yes, it could do the same purpose as the preservation, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item thirteen, Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with Alfred Van Ness and Company for the State Route Ninety-Six West Multi-Use Trail Project for a cost increase not to exceed forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
So both of these.
Any question about that one? Item number fourteen. Can we do fourteen and fifteen together? Fourteen is to amend the Franklin Municipal Code regarding an updating parking regulations, and fifteen is a resolution to implement time-restricted parking within the core commercial. So if we can do both of those at once, is that a problem?
They do relate to each other. I'll start off, I think Jonathan's going to come up here, and a lot of folks may come up here and join in the conversation. Lieutenant Prather also works with, with these issues. We talked to you about this a few months back in terms of our examination of our existing ordinances related to parking, some of which date back to the late seventies and, and needed to be updated. The, the item fourteen largely covers the amendment to the Municipal Code to clarify those issues, and that, that's sort of summarized here. We talk about a section adding prohibiting parking in public parking spaces if designated for the electric charging by any sign or pavement marking, unless, and actively charging vehicles there. We've got a few of those in our parking garages and a couple other locations across the town, across the city. That talks about no person shall stand or park a vehicle upon any public roadway, public parking lot, garage, or leased parking lot or garage for the principal purpose of displaying or sale or rent. That, that's added language there. We also talked about clarifying that the board may establish passenger and freight loading zones. That, that's an element. It specifically talks about a four-hour parking limit. We would provide that the board could revise that and, and make a determination related to parking time limits. The current ordinance actually differentiates warnings for non-county residents versus county residents, and we do not want to make that distinction. We do have an operating standard that, that provides for two warnings to be issued to parkers who are overtime before they get issued a citation that has a charge. They get a, a warning notice. And then we've made a revision to the amounts that can be charged for parking violations and the escalation of those. Of course, we cannot go over fifty dollars. So this steps up to that fifty-dollar maximum amount in a way that we think will be meaningful. Also makes it so that it is relative to the pay lots that, private lots that are out there for pay. Makes that, that citation greater than the pay lot charges so that people don't say, oh, it's cheaper to get a parking ticket than to go and pay in that pay lot. So we, we've revised it for that purpose and also to have it escalate a little more and be a little more meaningful for people who violate it more frequently. So those are the main highlights. David or Jonathan, anything we should touch on or describe further?
You said it.
Okay, so that's the base part of the ordinance. The, the next piece that we may want to walk through is the four-hour, two-hour discussion that we had a little bit of a couple weeks ago. But maybe I'll stop now if there are questions about the ordinance overall and the, kind of the enforcement component. We'll be glad to jump in on that.
Alderman Burger, then Alderman Blanton.
Yeah, I have a question on the occupy of more than one space. This is a problem. And I really don't like the way it's handled, because it says, no person, I'm going to read this. No person shall park a vehicle in any designated parking space so that any part, any part of such vehicle occupies more than one such space or protrudes, or it is protrude, beyond the official markings on the street or curb designating such space. My problem is, you get somebody in there, there's two or three spaces that are empty. Someone comes in, say, in the morning, they park, and they're not quite within that area. Or they protrude back past that last marking into the second space. So if I come along, or a resident comes along, or a tourist comes along, I, knowing this rule, would say, gosh, if I park here, I'm going to get a ticket. So therefore, I can't use the space. So that space, even though I can get my car in it, I can't park in it. If a tourist parks there, they don't know, and they're going to get a ticket, because the other guy did it wrong, okay? I don't think that's, that, that is totally not fair. And that is totally a problem with our visitors, tourists, and the residents of our city. You could have two or three spaces that are not usable, because somebody has gone over their line. And I got a warning one time, because I did that. I parked in a space that somebody had infringed upon that space. I had an apartment, I had an appointment down here, I had to get going, and I had to find a space. I parked, came out, I got a little notice on there with a notice. And I thought, this is ridiculous. Because then what, what happens is a perfectly good space is going to go to waste, or a perfectly good space is going to be utilized by somebody who's going to get a warning or get a ticket. So how do we fix this?
Probably everybody that was not parked within the designated spot, including you, probably got a warning for that, because like you said, it's one person throws off the whole, the whole row, basically. So everybody in there probably got a warning if they were not within their designated spot.
I'm not worried about the warning, I'm worried about the tickets for people.
Well, I think if they get enough warnings, which they get the two warnings before they get a ticket, they'll make sure they fall within that designated spot.
It still doesn't work.
But if there's a spot there that's not a full spot, the other person that's infringing will get the citation or the ticket, not the person or the, because they didn't park in the spot that wasn't a full spot.
Sometimes you don't know that, Sergeant Prather, because you're in the middle. Yeah, if you're on the ends, that's easy to tell. But if you're on the middle, two or three or four in the middle.
How else do you tell? I mean, that's the thing.
I don't know, and I, I don't know. I'm like, I don't even think we should be charging for that. I, I don't think so. I think we should just let it go.
How do we tell? Aren't there markings?
There, there's.
Some places there are.
There are, yeah, and there's a few places that are not marked.
Oh, that are not.
And if they're not.
And if they're not marked, then obviously you can't tell who's in the spot and who's not. So you don't cite for that. But usually it's down Main Street, and, and those have to be periodically repainted because of the use.
Okay. How desperately do we need this in here, is my question for everybody up here?
Which section is it?
Okay, it is on page two of six, and it's Section fifteen, six oh seven. And, you know, I think we need to discuss this. I mean, does it really need to be in here? I mean, if we don't, what's, what's?
I think we need a warrant.
What are the cons about it, if we took it out?
You're allowing people to park in multiple spaces?
That's right.
You're saying it's okay for one car to take two spaces?
And I don't think it is.
No, no, our spaces are so big, you can get them in. You can get them in.
But that's, that's the outcome, if you don't enforce that aspect of this ordinance.
Even though when someone infringes upon another space, the spaces are so large that you can actually get into it anyway.
Well, if you get into it, you're not.
If you fit within the lines, you're not going to get it. But if you get outside the lines, you could get it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that, I don't believe this is a new section. I think this is a carryover, this isn't something.
I know, I know.
Just making sure.
That's the one I think.
You know, are we going to do a lot more striping too, here in future, probably?
We're talking about doing some more of that.
New striping?
We're also, one of the things we're, this won't necessarily affect this, but we're, we're using some GIS technology to help us virtually mark spaces when we do time limits and look at that. We can take a photo image, time stamped, location stamped, and, and make sure that, that we're doing it that way as opposed, as opposed to chalking tires. It'll get us out of the chalking business, which will be more efficient and, yeah.
I, I just brought this up, because I, I, I find it to be.
It's affected you.
No, no, because.
No, I mean, because it happened to you, so you're aware of it.
It, it, true, Brandy, you're absolutely true. No, no, no.
No, it's frustrating, because there's a domino effect when somebody does it.
I'm the one that comes in here and goes, somebody needs to do something about this traffic downtown. But you're absolutely right, you do, you do pay attention to it. But before it happened to me, it happened to a tourist, and they got a warning. And they were standing there looking at it, and they were reading it, and they had a camera around there, and I stopped and I said, Joe, get a ticket. And they said, well, we don't think so, we think it's a warning. And they started reading it, and I said, oh, yeah, it's a warning. And they, they said, what did we do wrong? And then I'm looking at it, and then when it happened to me, I thought, okay, I remember them. And then I've seen a lot of that happen. And, and I don't honestly, even bringing it up, I don't think I've got a solution for it, but I just wonder how critical is it?
The, the problem is, if you don't leave those markings in place and designate spots, then they will pack the cars in so tight that you, you can't get out.
Oh, I'm not saying remove the markings.
Well, but I mean, unless we enforce those, those don't mean anything.
Okay.
I've got Alderman Blanton.
Yep.
And then Alderman Martin.
So this is a suggestion, based on the analogy of raising things to its acme. When you go from ten dollars to twenty, and then the second offense goes from twenty-five to thirty, I get that we have to hit fifty as, as a top. I would be more inclined to go fifteen instead of twenty on first offense, because that way it gives you somewhere else to go later. I don't know if we're doing this to, to give us a better revenue stream or what, but I think that's a little bit big of a jump, and it puts a little bit more of a, a gap in there.
A little pressure on the person that's violating, I would think.
That's just my opinion.
I, I think our main focus is not really driven by revenue, as it is driven by getting people's attention, that it's, you've gotten two warnings, and now it's, and we wanted to make it different enough from the, the private lots, that it would be like, okay, I need to either do this right or, you know, find another parking option that, that is not a, whatever, two-hour or four-hour parking space.
If you can park and get a fine cheaper than you can park in the parking lot.
Yeah. So it's just, it's trying to differentiate that. It's a judgment call. You want to do fifteen, that's obviously board's discretion.
I understand, I understand what you're saying too, but I just think it's a pretty big jump.
Are you, you done? Alderman Blanton? Alderman Martin?
Back to that parking, the lines. There are people who park that way on purpose, so no one will park next to them and scratch their car.
Right.
There are a lot, there's a lot of that.
These spaces are huge.
A lot of that. They'll pull in and I've seen that done.
Let's give them a ticket.
Now, the garage, the garage. We parked in the garage the other day, the, the sign didn't change. Is it always working?
It didn't capture your carpet.
It is, it works, it works pretty well. The Second Avenue is a little different, because we have some spaces designated for city vehicles, so it's trying to net that out.
This was Fourth Avenue.
So Fourth Avenue is very accurate, from everything we can tell. When we look at the cameras and we look at the spaces, those counts are pretty accurate. There's a little bit of, there's a little bit of play in terms of when it decides to do a full notification to allow for a little margin for error, but it, it's, it's pretty, pretty accurate from everything we can tell.
It was three hundred and nine the entire time we ate.
You all may need to test it out.
And cars came and go.
There's actually three hundred and thirty spaces in that.
So it didn't go to three ten when y'all parked?
I came out when Margaret went in.
Margaret may have some kind of Batmobile or something.
We can look at the cameras, and we can count, and we have folks who do that, check that from time to time to make sure it's working. This, like I said, Second Avenue is a little weird, because we've got some designated spaces for city vehicles, and we're trying to net that out, and we have to kind of reset that a little more regularly. Fortunately, there's a little less demand at Second Avenue, so we've got a little more margin for error there. But the message is still important to let people know where parking is available and, and make sure they get the information. You can get it online, and we're even working on an app that could help you know where parking is available.
Well, if it's still at three oh nine, you better check it.
We do all the time. I would bet it's pretty right.
Could, we go on to the exhibit and?
I have another question, too.
Sure.
And, and this is not, as I think on any of the new things, it's on page one, and it's talking about obstructing traffic is prohibited. Says whenever any vehicle is standing or parked upon or beside a roadway, no person shall open any door of such vehicle on the side of the vehicle nearest to the flow of traffic. I mean, you know, I'm parked out here to get out of my car. I, I'm going to have to open the door.
True, into the flow, into the street, but obviously if there's cars coming, you don't want to do that.
Exactly, exactly.
That's what they're trying to say.
Because that's, so that's all it means, because otherwise, there would be no way for me to get out.
Right, right.
I mean, really, think about that.
I think, isn't it safe flow of traffic in there?
Tell us about this picture, Jonathan.
This is the parking time limit change.
This is the time limit discussion. So what you're seeing in front of you is, is the, basically how it is today. The purple is four-hour parking, the light green is no time limit, no marked parking, but people park there, so it is parking, but there's no markings. The dark green is no markings, excuse me, there are markings and there's no time limit. And there's a couple of small spots up there, it's hard to. And there's a couple of small spots up there, it's hard to see, but on Third Avenue, you've got the reserve for the sheriff's deputies, and you've also got on Fifth Avenue, the thirty-minute parking in red.
Can you point out where the- which streets we're talking about?
I can.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we've got Main Street, Third Avenue. So this is how it is today, and you've got the four-hour parking in purple or magenta, whichever you wanna call that. The light green on all these peripheral streets are untimed and unmarked, but they are- parking is allowed. The dark green, kind of mixed in between all these, is there's no time limit, but they are marked spaces currently. On Fifth Avenue, there's thirty-minute parking in front of a- a post office in the bank. And on Third Avenue, in front of the court, well, the side of the courthouse, is the reserve for sheriff's deputies. There's two or three spaces there. So this is existing conditions.
When- when will the striping start?
Uh, that'll actually be up to you guys, when we start that. That's a F- uh, an additional discussion.
You mean another time, or can we say tonight, start tomorrow?
You can say it.
Striping is not really the topic for tonight, but we're ready to do this.
This is about the timing, how long you can stay in a space, and there'll be another time they talk to us about-
Well, they gotta get in the space first, and that, striping takes care of getting in the right space.
And then we've got the next exhibit is, uh, the option A, or the first option. Yeah, next page. It's not really option A, but it's the next page.
Exhibit A.
It says option A on our thing.
Does it? Okay, it does say option A, good.
Exhibit A and option A both.
So what you're seeing on this exhibit, most of your unmarked spaces, what we're proposing is for those to go away. There would still be a few unmarked spaces on- on lesser used streets, but for the most part-
Mention the name of the street, if you don't mind, John.
This one is, what I'm pointing to now is Second Avenue, and then over here is Seventh Avenue, between Fair and Columbia Avenue, hope I don't give anybody laser surgery out in the audience here. What we're proposing on the bulk of Main Street would be, the orange is two-hour parking, so your four-hour parking goes away. We would propose two-hour parking on Fifth Avenue, except for the- the outer periphery. The sheriff's deputy spaces would stay the same, and this light blue that you're seeing, and you're gonna see it pop up in all the options, is a shared space for transit, because of the bus stop out front, and also for ride-sharing, Lyft, Uber, those kind of things. It's actually in front of a fire hydrant, so we can't use it for anything else, but it'd be a great drop-off and pickup zone, where no one leaves the vehicle.
And- and so on that one there, on Third, that mean, would that take also care of rearranging the, uh, what we call the loading zone, right out in front of the doors here?
Yes, it would.
So in other words, it'd take the place of that?
Yes, it would.
And- and that- that seems like a good idea, don't you think?
Yes. The next option. This one, you get to look really close, and the difference is between Fifth Avenue and Seventh Avenue, some of the parking has changed here, so there, it used to be a marked but not timed. So it's kind of bounced back between the two options, the only difference between option A and B is right here, so option B shows two-hour parking.
More in front of the retail area there, and then goes to untimed to the west.
Yeah.
That's- that's the only difference in these options.
So by the church and the archives, it changes to-
And the next option. Option C, if you wanna keep four-hour parking. This is basically the same as option A. Option A and option C are exactly the same with the exception of two-hour versus four-hours, so the purple again would be four-hour parking. Very- very close to leaving it the same, if- if you chose that- that third option. And we've shown you three options here, obviously there's, you know, an infinite amount of options you could do down here, you could do it block by block. This is just kind of our first blush, at- at looking at these, we're here for direction from- from you as a group.
Is there a time, evening, or weekend?
The proposed time right now is eight to five, eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, and again, certainly that's open for discussion, but it's only Monday through Friday.
And so it leaves Saturday and Sunday open, we talked about whether to do Saturday or not. Sunday, we thought there was no question you wanted to keep that wide open. Uh, one thing I would just add to the discussion, part of the parking study looked at duration, and the duration in these areas was actually less than two hours, on average, it was, I think, an hour forty, hour thirty, something like that.
Roughly two-thirds of the- the vehicles that- that we showed during our study were parking two hours or less.
So it really reflects a lot of the use now, but- but the idea is to keep those on-street parking spaces that are adjacent to retail and restaurant locations in particular, keep those turning. So, uh, customers could use those, and the longer-term parking goes to the garages or these untimed areas.
And what about the-
Or parking lots, obviously.
What about the, didn't I read in here where it said Monday through Fridays, including holidays?
It did say including holidays.
So how does that work? I mean, say you've got Memorial Day on a Monday, so it's-
Uh, right now, the way it's written, it would, I mean, it's just- just weekdays versus weekends, so it would be weekdays would be hourly or marked parking, and- and weekends would not. That can certainly be changed.
I- I don't know. I don't know if we want to, I'd- I'd like to hear people's opinions on holidays during, holidays during-
Christmas is different, but Memorial Day-
If it falls on Monday through- when, through Fridays. Yeah, so-
Cause Memorial Day, probably most of the shopping would be open, wouldn't you think?
I would think so.
Then it just becomes, and the reason for not including holidays right now, or including holidays in- in the time, is it just difficult to enforce. So people don't really know exactly what may be a recognized holiday by the city of Franklin.
What about Christmas and Easter and Thanksgiving, you know, let them park all day?
If it's on a Monday, it's enforced, if it's on a weekend, it's not, correct?
That's the way it's written currently.
I've got Alderman Planton.
We're gonna be clear on Easter, but, uh, Christmas or Thanksgiving.
Easter, you're a pet.
Now, the question is, do we have someone on staff that's gonna be there enforcing it?
We do, he's right here.
On Christmas, on Monday?
We're never gonna tip our hand exactly on that one.
I've got Alderman Planton.
So, question, how does this affect or not affect handicap parking?
There's no time limit on handicaps.
Okay, so, but that doesn't need to be posted?
No, I mean, that's the state law.
Okay, I didn't know, sorry.
One of the things that would happen as- as- as we do this implementation, we would look at adding the required number of handicap spaces, so there, there's like, well, I believe it's one per block, per side, so you're gonna have to see more handicap per pro-
Cause right now, they're all on the square.
That's right, and that's- that needs to change long-term.
Yeah.
Does anybody have a feel for any of the options?
I like option one, with the two-hour parking.
The two-hour?
Yeah.
Okay.
Option one?
Option one, exhibit A.
Option A.
It's the second page.
I like B. What's the major difference between A and B?
A and B is- is down in the area of, uh, Third Avenue and West Main.
Yeah.
It's- it's just this area right here that's different. So if you kind of flip back and forth, you'll see the difference there.
So, from-
That's correct, right in front of the orchard.
Where? Right there.
Right here.
That area, right there.
That's the only area that's different?
That's different.
Would go untimed, no time limit versus a two-hour.
Correct.
And B is the time limit.
A is the time, A would be two-hour parking on that whole block.
Takes it all the way to seven.
Oh, I see what you mean.
A, and then B only takes it in front of the commercial.
That's correct, that's correct.
Cause you start getting the plan to residential, I think that was part of the thinking, B is to transition there.
That's- that's why I like B, yeah. That's why I prefer B.
I just have a question, cause we had talked about maybe just having parking on one side, or having kind of a one-way street down there, close to the old post office, and what do we do?
I do believe Paul has got in both options, in both options down, is it, is it not Cummins, I can't remember the name of the alley. Is this alley right here behind the post office? That would, it would be one-way in these options.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be a separate decision that we will bring to you. Um, this provides, this would support that, but we would bring to you separately, changing that to one-way.
Okay, okay. I've had some- some people saying to me that that was a difficult place.
We think that will work better from a safety standpoint, and it'll actually help the parking function a little better, because it's pretty narrow.
From a safety standpoint, it's a big, it's a big deal, because coming out of the alley on the side to the angle, we would actually, for sight distance, have to remove most of this parking on this block here, for sight distance. So what we're proposing long-term, again, a different discussion, but would be one-way towards Church Street.
I- I- I think that's what they were saying, that that would be better.
I believe that's what the property owners actually wanted, when we talked about that several months ago.
I think so. And we'll bring that to you separately, though. You're not making that decision.
Right, okay, but I just, because that's one of the things that I had heard, I just wanted to make sure that we were-
So it'd be one-way, uh, for travel?
Going north.
How about-
Going south.
Going south, so there's parking on both sides of the street right now, or only one?
It's parking on both sides of the street, but there's really not room for it right now.
Yeah, that-
That's part of the problem.
So would you take off parking from one side then?
It's not striped.
It's not striped, what we're- what we're proposing, I believe-
Why would you take-
We're only showing it on one side.
You wouldn't have to.
You wouldn't have to, if you're only gonna make it one-way, you could have parking on both sides.
We would look at the total width, right now, we're just showing it as parking on one side, one way.
And that's another discussion to make that decision.
And it's on one side right now, cause it's not one-way yet.
Yes.
Right.
So, when you go one-way, that's something we can look at, whether you could do both sides.
If it's okay with you, I'm gonna ask Christie Williams, from downtown, the Main Street Director, she wanted to speak about the parking, so.
Can have two hours.
Well, while she's coming up, tell me what residential is between Fifth and Seventh Avenue. Hold up there.
When I said that, I didn't necessarily mean there's residential right there, it's just getting proximity to the residential on the west.
There is none right there.
Past Seventh.
Go ahead, Christie.
So I'm Christie Williams, hello, Mayor and Alderman, thank you for letting me speak. The, um, DFA is, administers our Main Street program, and that is, um, what the position I hold at the Heritage Foundation there. We are very, very grateful to have been a part of the Parking Commission study. We've attended many meetings and have been able to evaluate, analyze, create recommendations. I've talked to Nancy Williams, State Main Street Director, because she held this position for sixteen years. And she said, certainly, um, fight for making sure you don't go less than two hours on Main Street. And so we were able to make that recommendation. We are thrilled to have the new parking attendant working on the streets. That makes a big difference on making sure people are turning over. And we are very excited about the signs at the parking garages, even if the three oh nine is still there. But within the last six months, especially in December, you, as you know, we had a lot of private parking, property owners start charging for parking spaces, which is their, um, choice and luxury. And so with that change, it does change a lot of our dynamics about where are people parking, and I don't see a lot of people parking in the back, behind the three hundred block and the four hundred block. Um, so with that changing landscape, we certainly hope that we can continue to be a part of the conversations with the Parking Commission as these decisions are made. Uh, one thing, one business owner has asked me to make sure that everyone knows that he, they would like the side streets to also be, uh, limited parking. You know, maybe not the green on the side streets, but also make them limited by two to four hours, whatever. So, that it doesn't allow those people just to park there all day. Some people or employees park in front of another person's business all day, and so it impacts their come-and-go traffic.
Right.
And really, that is the biggest point I wanted to make. We just wanna continue to gather all stakeholders, as all Main Street programs do, which means building owners, merchants, the guests that come and enjoy historic downtown Franklin, the DNA, all of our neighbors, you know, how does that impact, once it gets into the residential areas, et cetera, so.
One comment that jumped out, and that was, homeowners are charging to park?
No, there are some, um, property owners that have chosen to create a paid parking situation. Like in December, um, Fourth Avenue Church has hired Stewart Logistics to create a paid parking situation with so many stalls. And then Mr. Green has parked happy, doing some of his faces, and then over at the church, is it, um, one generation? Um, they have parked happy with a few spots as well. So the message, you know, certainly, we- we hope with, sometimes our merchants report fifty and sixty percent of their businesses from, um, tourists, not just locals, but let's just say it's fifty-fifty. You know, we wanna communicate simply and easily to our locals, as well as our tourists, as they come to town. But we would just love to continue to be part of that dialogue, cause we've had, um, I personally have probably received three Main Street calls from other states saying they've heard that Franklin had an excellent parking study, and they wanted to know more about the company that you hired, and they have been very impressed, so I commend all of you for making those decisions.
Walker Parking and Volkerd.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that the dinner study?
Yes, sir, I have- I have forwarded many of their recommendations to those cities and communities that are also looking for some of the same type of assistance.
Do you have a preference on, uh, exhibits or options?
I- I- I think that, um, there- there might be some modifications that- that- that the DFA, DNA, building owners might want to- to convey, however, I'm not ready to, you know, say that.
Good answer.
Pardon? Good answer?
Yeah, we'll make sure you can say that to us.
Sure, I mean, a lot of people, we trust the work. You know, we trust the work of this parking, the people that you've hired. However, there are some things, just like the businesses on the side streets on Third and Fourth, if they're saying people are parking in front of their businesses all day, but they work just around the corner, should we consider that? And I don't know what stage is, are we in the final stages to where the decisions are being made tonight? Or is there a little bit of leeway to continue a little bit on that discussion before final voting?
There's no voting tonight, this is to bring this back, we've talked about this previously. This was one of the higher priority or higher, more short-term initiatives that could happen. Obviously, if you wanted to extend time parking restrictions, we can look at that, but that just wasn't identified as a, as much of a priority in terms of the turn of parking, so.
And since, I guess, the last meeting I attended, I had received that feedback.
That's certainly something we can study going forward. This area, though, had been flagged in the study, study as a particular area that- that two-hour parking made sense.
Yes, sir.
Um, I- I don't know that we asked the question further out.
About the side streets.
Yeah, cause it's a little more of a, it's just a different kind of mix of uses there compared to the core in downtown. So, uh, it's certainly something that we can look at and understand how you might push certain things out into some of those streets too, and that's something we need to examine.
And keep a consistent message, you know, for people that are visiting our town.
Alderman Peterson?
Just one more small thing, I looked at my notes from before, we were talking about on court days, the Fourth Avenue garage, but- but now as I understand it, the parking time in the garages is not going to be.
Right, this is really on-street parking.
This is really on-street parking, so they could- they could be there for, if they had to be there all- all morning or all day for court, they could still be there. Just wanted to check, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Thanks, Christie, item sixteen is Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven, a resolution to fund and authorize staff to proceed with a design right-of-way acquisition construction phase for the West Main Street Bridge Modification Project.
So we're bringing this item back, and I'll let Jonathan maybe walk through some specifics, but, uh, this had been the request that had come through our Capital Investment Committee to look at providing a pedestrian option, and we had a little sticker shock on doing it all the way as we might normally do it in terms of the amount of sidewalk and infrastructure, so we looked at a bridge modification or extension that might facilitate a pedestrian, um, uh, path over- over the bridge to- to connect there. At the request of the board, we did do some pedestrian counts, so we wanted to share those counts, review that design with you again, and- and field any questions and discussion related to that.
The counts we did, pedestrian counts, we were- we were struggling, you've asked for this a while back, we struggled to get the counts on, have several days in a row that were pretty weather, at the time we were trying to count. So we finally got the pretty days, in the middle, it was the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth of April, we did counts. So that was a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in April. We started the counts about midday on Tuesday, and went all the way through midday on Thursday. So we have all of Wednesday, the afternoon of Tuesday, and the morning of Thursday. And what you're, what you're seeing there, and the counts are included in your packet, it was quite a bit of use. It's not super high, but there is quite a bit of use, especially, I mean, from about six in the morning till about eight at night, it's, you've got people consistently using that area to cross through. So what you're seeing on the- on the big board is the, I feel like a game show host, on the big board.
It's your true- It's your true calling.
Yes, that's right. It's what we're proposing. So if you remember, the original option was to truly be compliant with ADA standards, would require you to build sidewalks and a lot of modifications. And as you can see on the map, the blue lines are water lines that are in the area, and the orange and the green lines are the sewer in the area. So you can see if you actually truly widened that bridge to put sidewalks on both sides, the utility costs were just very prohibitive. So what we did was look at the north side of the bridge, and what we're showing is to widen that north side of the bridge as much as we can. We would not be constructing any sort of sidewalk on there, would not be a true pedestrian facility, but it would be able to support a sidewalk if we were to ever widen West Main. I believe the Comprehensive Transportation Plan long-term calls for this to be a three-lane section with curb and gutter and sidewalks on both sides. So this would support that on the north side, so you wouldn't be tearing the bridge out in the future should you widen it. But this would allow about an eight to ten-foot shoulder for pedestrians to walk across the river or the creek there without being in the drive lanes.
Very good.
Questions?
This works.
Yes.
Ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Item seventeen, Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-seven, a resolution to approve an alternative preliminary design concept for the one-hundred-block Battle Avenue Drainage Improvements Project and authorize staff to complete right-of-way acquisition, final design and construction.
So we had talked about this last month at the Capital Investment Committee, and I think the committee wanted us to walk through this with the full board. So this has been a project we've been looking at for some time, have generated some additional options there. And I'd like to have Jonathan sort of walk through that with you and field any questions and help facilitate a discussion about where we go on this project.
Absolutely. While they're opening up the presentation, we've got several things to walk through here. It's a pretty good size file, so.
There we go, right there.
So this first exhibit is actually a, from the original plans for the storage facility off Fairgrounds Street back so nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five-ish. And what this, the outline is what they consider to be the drainage area. And where my cursor's at, the bottom of that drainage area is Fairgrounds, and up here is Battle Avenue. With this being what they considered to be the low spot, and the storage facility is kind of in this big blank area. But as you can see from the contours, this was always the low spot in the area. So once they built the storage facility in the middle of it, they filled up the low spot. So we can go down to the next exhibit, and this is, it's the current, well, a more current aerial. But you can actually see what we have looked at to be the drainage limit, is this red line all the way. So we believe they missed quite a bit of the drainage area, so there's actually more water going to that area than what they thought was going to that area. This uses their contours, and we modeled this flood for a hundred-year storm event. If the storage facility was not there, this blue area is what would flood in the one-hundred-year storm. So as you can see, one oh seven and one oh nine, and I may be off a house or two there, these two houses would not quite get flooded. It would cause nuisance flooding in their backyard, but it would not get in the structures. So that's what would have happened before, to the best of our abilities, what we think would have happened prior to the construction of the storage facility. Next page. So this is a more current map with the storage facility considered, the existing contours. And it's hard to see, we've still got the drainage areas outlined in red. But also, these four houses in a row are the houses that reported damage during two thousand and ten floods. And that ranges anywhere from a foot or so of water in their crawl space to a foot, foot to three feet of water in their basement. These two had the more, the crawl space flooding, and the two to the east had the actual flooding in their basements. But this shows what we think, based on our flood modeling and based on reports of damage during the two thousand and ten floods, this is what happens today during a hundred-year storm event. So anywhere in blue is what we see basically standing water during a hundred-year storm event. And also of note, it's hard to see on this exhibit, if you actually go down Fairgrounds Street, there's actually a pipe that's been in the ground many, many years, and I believe it predates the storage facility. Water actually used to drain across the road and into that low spot, but now nothing has ever been done there. So that pipe really, there's nowhere for that water to go. It just sits. So what happens today with the storage facility, their detention pond is, has a pump system that pumps out to Columbia Avenue, down to Fairgrounds and to Columbia, and pumps that water out over time. Next exhibit. So this is, we can, it's called Project Number One. This doesn't really have to do directly with the flooding along Battle Avenue, but it's something we discovered as we looked at this pipe to nowhere. What needs to happen long-term to get the lower half of the drainage basin out of up here, above, so basically south of Fairgrounds Street, we don't want that water draining north of Fairgrounds anymore. So this would capture that water, bring it down to Columbia Avenue, and then it would tie into what the future system would be along Columbia Avenue. So that's what this system is meant to do. It gets rid of the pipe to nowhere and actually helps drain part of that drainage area. And Project Two A, this is what we originally proposed and you approved as a part of a resolution about a year ago, was to install a drainage system from north of Battle Avenue back down to our alley. We were going to purchase this existing vacant land, enlarge the storage facilities, the storage facility's detention pond. We would accept responsibility and maintenance of that pond, so it would be one large pond. Unfortunately, the pond size to hold the one-hundred-year storm would be about a fifteen-foot-deep hole in the ground. So we were going to have to put a chain-link fence and then a double fence behind that, so you wouldn't be looking at a chain-link fence with barbed wire. But even with those issues, we would still see this level of flooding in the area. So we wouldn't be in the houses anymore. But what we finally got to was the big thing, was the price tag, was a three-million-dollar price tag. That's not what anybody wanted to see. So we went back, and we've been looking at this for three or four years now, and tried to rack our brains to figure out anything else we could do. So Project Two B is, we would no longer, the storage facility would take maintenance of their own pond as they do today. We would not purchase this property, but we would purchase the two properties that had the most flooding, that actually had it got in the basement themselves. We would purchase those two houses, raise those two houses, install underground detention underneath the property, and actually slope the property with six-to-one slopes, which is very maintainable. So it would be a slight depression in those two lots long-term. So your normal two-to-ten-year storms would go underground, you would never see them. But when it flooded to a hundred-year storm, you would see basically standing water here. So every, I think Joe and his gang have been out there maybe three times over the last ten years to pump out this flooding. So when water would stand that high, we would put in the structure in place to allow them to drain that, you know, throw a pump down in there and drain it every few years. But your nuisance flooding would be underground, and you would never see it. It would just look like grass and trees, because that's what would be there.
And those houses would remain, is what you're saying?
They would not remain. They would not remain. We would raise the houses.
Raise them. I'm thinking raise. You mean raise.
Raise with a Z, yeah. And we've talked to both property owners. Both property owners are in agreement to sell, but that's certainly an option. I know the board has been very hesitant to buy properties in this type of program. This would not be a FEMA program. It would just be strictly a local project.
Green space.
It'd be green space.
Green space.
And you can see the price tag is about a million-dollar difference, and it really accomplishes the same thing.
Is there no way to put a pipe and pipe it to Columbia Avenue and drain it to some kind of system?
Unfortunately, no, because there's really no, there's really no system in this whole area. First off, there's no infrastructure along Columbia Avenue at all anyway, so there's nothing to even drain it into. And there's just not enough fall to get all this water down Columbia Avenue.
And you're just dealing with older infrastructure that didn't anticipate all the things we do now with stormwater, and we're trying to find a way to retrofit to address.
Well, when these houses were built in the fifties and sixties, these are some things that were of no concern at the time, so. But as we've built out, obviously, you're seeing the issues out that area.
Well, two million dollars includes purchasing of the two houses.
It does include. But it's actually about half, a little over half the cost.
You know, my only comment is, these houses get a foot or a foot and a half of water in their crawl space or perhaps in their basement, you know, in the bad time. And there are numerous other houses that get many feet of water in their living space. And we're not talking about purchasing them, you know, that's.
Which area are you referring to, Alderman Peterson?
Oh, well, I'm thinking about Ewingville. I'm thinking about Harpitz Meadows. There are a lot of them, and as I say, I know they had it up this high in the two thousand and ten, where in this case, in two thousand and ten, they had it, as I say, a foot in their crawl space or a foot and a half in their basement.
And part of our challenge in those areas is there's not a solution where you can relieve some properties by doing certain things.
I know. I know. I'm just saying.
These are ones that would just be eligible for that reoccurring that we looked at several years ago with some of the grant opportunities. That would be the only opportunity there.
Are any of those Alderman Petersons referring to, would they eventually fall under FEMA?
Yes.
They would be eligible.
That's, some of those properties are the ones that would be affected by the box bridge. We've talked about the installation during the Franklin Road project. It would affect part of those properties.
And by the way, that, we're still, you know, I was looking at some other things. We are still planning to do what the Corps of Engineers was recommending.
Correct.
But the city's going to do.
With city funding.
We're just not taking the grant because of the delay.
And we're actually having a meeting Friday with T-DOT because they have put the reconstruction of the Main Street Bridge and the Franklin Road Bridge on their three-year plan. So we're going to try to coordinate those two things. It may be something where we could give as much money as we were going to build the box bridges in. When they're rehabilitating the bridge, if they could put another span in, it'd be better for everybody in the long run. So we're going to have that discussion and try to at least start that discussion Friday.
And you did mention the Main Street Bridge and also the Third Avenue Bridge there.
Correct. Yeah, those are both, those are both on the three-year plan.
But if they're just talking about making the height of the span more.
Yeah, that's part of what we're trying.
That might work on the Main Street. That would absolutely not improve anything on Third Avenue.
Yeah, they haven't told us exactly what their rehabilitation plans include yet. That's part of what we're trying to find out Friday.
And, yeah, because I've, since I heard about that, I'm very interested.
Alderman Barnhill?
When we allowed the storage facility, if I'm not mistaken, we probably, we were probably told they would install a pump, pump enough that would be able to pump it, drain it fast enough that it would not flood those homes. Apparently, that did not happen.
That's correct.
But you're right.
If they had installed a pump now, fast enough to drain it, what would happen?
Right now, if you could install a larger pump, if you wanted to, all that water doesn't get to that pond. So there's actually, over time, the alley has built up with trees, landscaping, vegetation of whatever kind, piles of dirt. So the water actually can't even drain into there. So part of the reason it backs up is the water from the storage facility is getting in there, part of the water's getting in there. But the water that's coming off of Battle Avenue in these lots just kind of ponds in these backyards and into the houses. That's really what we're seeing now. So that's what that original three-million-dollar option, in addition to building the pond, we actually had to be able to get away for water to get there. So we were actually grading out of these people's backyards as well, which is a lot of the resistance we got from the homeowners who weren't directly affected. They didn't want to see all the trees in the alley go away, but we really couldn't get around that.
What about what Alderman Blanton originally thought the interpretation was? He raised those houses four feet. Raised them four feet. Is that an option?
It's certainly an option to raise the houses.
Do you know how much you'd need to raise them?
Uh, the numbers we, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I know the numbers we've been getting from FEMA recently is to lift, and we'll say lift versus raise. To lift a house, about a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollars a house. And that's a very high preliminary number. And then you're looking for somewhere to put those people for however many months it takes to move. Because obviously, you can't live in your house when we take the brick off the side and jack it up.
And you still get the water.
This would be entirely the city of Franklin. These people are not in a flood zone.
But two hundred thousand versus two million, right? Is that?
Well, two hundred thousand plus a million, too. You said the houses were a little over a half of the two-million-dollar project.
Correct, of the project we're showing.
It's two million. So it makes the houses be over a million.
Yes. Both houses together are over a million dollars.
One point two five, based on your numbers.
Correct.
How is this our responsibility?
What we've been looking at is.
Private ownership, private homes, people that bought their homes. I don't understand this. I don't understand how this is our government's responsibility for us to do this.
You've had neighbors come to you and say, I consistently have a flooding problem. Help.
And how is that our problem?
Well, that's your choice as a policymaker. But what we were charged to do is say, how would you solve flooding in this one-hundred-block of Battle Avenue? So that's the options we've been developing. It's your call about how you allocate stormwater funds if you want to try to help with this.
Is this flooding, has this flooding been our fault as a city? Has the city created the flooding problem?
Well, we allowed that stuff to be built there.
The way development was done fifty years ago, just didn't anticipate this kind of stormwater management techniques that are in place now, and that Franklin's done a really, really effective job in the last, you know, thirty, forty years of doing that. But not so much back then. Quite frankly, nobody did back then. But that's, that's what you're looking at, is how you handle stormwater issues. This is one of the possible ways to use your stormwater funds, but it's a cost-benefit discussion at the end of the day.
Yeah, so we're going to fix something that fifty years ago was created, but we did not create it today. I have a problem with that. The other thing is, I have a problem, Dan brought up, there's a lot of people who have water all over their houses, you know, maybe. So how do you pick and choose? How do you pick and choose? I mean, sign up and you have a list of fifty, sixty people. How do you choose that? You can't possibly do it for everyone, and then, so how do you pick and choose to do it for some and not for all? And also, I don't see that, I'm not trying to be harsh here. I'm just saying, I don't see how today, this board sitting here, if we didn't cause that problem in the last year, five years, ten years, twenty years, if the city here didn't do something that caused that, and it was caused from all these other issues from fifty years ago, I don't see how that is our responsibility to fix this problem.
Let me, let me raise a.
Unless you can tell me something different.
Well, let me give you another example. We're going to spend almost a million dollars, if I remember correctly, to put the culverts underneath the Franklin Road Bridge, and it's going to take thirty properties out of the floodplain. You could use your argument that maybe we shouldn't do that either, because.
But we're not touching their homes. We're going to be putting it under our infrastructure. That's a big difference.
But we're saving those homes.
Well, inadvertently, we are saving those homes, but we are putting that structure under our infrastructure. We're not touching their homes. We're not raising up their single, single.
A part of that will raise the single-family homes. A part of that is, that's something we're going to bring to you at a later date, but that is a part of that.
So after we put the culvert in and everything, we're going to be going back to their homes.
The culvert is, yes, that's correct. Lifting the homes, that is part of it.
And we also.
That may or may not be funded by the city.
We.
All right. Different decision.
We have a health and safety component of our mission, and I'm not sure, just more of a comment I'm making. As a city, a city, we are, obligation may be a little stronger word, but we are, we have a charge to look at the health and safety of our communities. I mean, we're talking about trash, hard enough trash, and of course, police and car. But also, if there is, if there is health, this could be potentially health issues if there was children in the home. I don't have to answer, Alderman, but I'm just saying that there are things there that we have to consider. But you're right, there are, there are other places that could probably make that same argument. You're right.
How do you pick and choose that? And that, how do, wow. I just see it as a Pandora's Box, that I don't know if we want to open that box because I don't know if there's an end to that box.
So do we do nothing?
In the future, we could be addressing, and can people come and sue us for saying, well, you did it for one, you're not doing it for another. You did it for ten, you didn't do it for the other ten. Or you didn't, do you see what I'm talking about? I just don't see how that doesn't open a Pandora's Box for the future. So I don't know if my concerns are legitimate. I'd like to have a legal information on that at some point, Shawna, because I think we need to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. I'm just raising that for discussion.
Well, in response to the Pandora's Box, you've already got that. You've got that down on figures.
Correct.
And screw math. So you've already, now, yes, yeah, I'm thinking, but it's figures, anyway. I'm right there. So you've already got that. So you've already got the request at some point in town. So you've already got that. So you've already got the request at some point in time, somewhere, to do some issues down there also.
That's correct.
So when you do this, then that brings that to the forefront there, and that's the answer to your Pandora. That's one of the answers to your Pandora's Box, is that, a, and, and, you know, somebody will miss, construe what I'm getting to say. Do you know how long this has been going on?
They, they, the houses themselves.
Fifty, sixty, seventy years that that has been doing that. I mean, it's not.
It's not in the floodplain, and, and they wouldn't have had any reason to know, to think that it was going to flood, but when we allowed, I say we.
The city.
Allowed this mess to be built there, that exacerbated that problem, and those houses over there on, on the, in Harpeth, Harpeth Meadows, um, that's in the floodplain, isn't it? It's right sitting there on the river.
Sure.
But, let me tell you, as somebody who moved here from places where things that were just in flat land
close to a river did not, were not necessarily mean they were in flood, floodplain. It's where I, where I grew up, there were plenty of rivers, but that didn't mean that the houses kind of close to them where.
Let me tell you about that land right there. Uh, s, um, an Alderman sat right here in this room or wherever they met at that time, and told his brother who lived on that street that it was not the squirrels who put the grass in that fence, it was the water. And he didn't believe it, and he went right on and built his house, right in the, right by that fence.
Now we got the real story. We, now we got the real story.
You got the squirrels over there.
Beaver.
But I have a copy of the nineteen sixty-eight flood, uh, service, service done for the city of Franklin on the street where I lived at one time. There were houses, uh, coming up to ninety-six. There was one house over on the other side of, of the Loop Road. That was in nineteen sixty-eight. After then, the city of Franklin, after having that there, still allowed probably twenty other houses to be built there. And that was the city of Franklin who allowed that.
I was just talking with Jonathan a little bit. We could, Alderman Speedy threw out the idea of raising, lifting homes. We could develop an option more around that. It's probably not just the two homes, it's probably four or five homes. It's that, that whole group, if you look at the, the very first slide that shows.
That the red, little red spots.
So it's probably more of a group there. Uh, we'd need to look at how much you'd need to raise it and some costs there.
And what you would still see with that option is, it, the, all the nuisance flooding that, that Joe does get called out for occasionally to, to pump out there, it's still going to be there.
Yeah, you're still going to have the flooding in the backyards.
You're still going to have their yards underwater, but the house would not be.
The homes would be protected. So we could, we could further develop that option if you would like, uh, to just show you that. It's, you know, we, we could just give you a cost of, about what those components together would look like.
We've got an example for you on Lewisburg if you need some money. You've been through it.
That's right.
The other thing is, is you're addressing an entire drainage basin area.
That's correct.
It, it's a lot more than just addressing.
Yeah, with two homes.
You're addressing a large area.
So with the option that's on the screen right now, we would basically be addressing, and, and then Marx, he's got a lot of background with, with the flood modeling. We would be addressing the, the drainage, actually in that section of the neighborhood, it would not just be a point fix.
Right.
It's actually for the whole one-hundred block.
Because we're trying to take care of the water, not necessarily save the house.
That's right.
So the part, the bigger priority is the water.
Right. And I think one of the other elements to consider here as well is that some of these houses have finished basements, so raising, raising structures may not fully make people whole.
Lifting is the word.
Pardon me?
Lifting.
Sorry. So I just, I just wanted to, to bring that, bring that out as well. Um, it's certainly a consideration to do, but, um, I know there's at least one of those homes has a finished basement, correct?
And what happens with that?
Belute, okay, so.
We could at least just give you an assessment of that.
Worth taking a look.
Yeah, just give you what that might look like.
Pardon me?
What happens with that? Did you say, because of the basement?
If it's finished basement, then, you know, you're, they're going to lose a portion of their living space, one way or the other, so, or it'll be subject to flooding if you allow it to stay.
The correct term's jacking them up.
Somebody's got to be jacked up.
Anyway, I just wanted to.
What?
Thank you, thank you.
I got a question for you.
That probably is not an option, though, because you have to go to so many to be able to do what you want to do, and then you've got, you've got the finished basement on that one over there. That's probably, and plus, depending on how, how you've got to raise them up, so that's probably not an option to do that. But you can look.
Alderman Berger, if you want to make one comment before we do the last item, eighteen.
How, uh, first of all, how old are these houses?
Fifties and sixties.
All right, nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties?
Sixties, correct.
And what condition are these homes in usually, that we know? I mean, have people remodeled them and updated them, or are they?
For the most part, I believe several of these houses have been remodeled. I know the, there's a, there's, it's not exactly a fifty-fifty split between the two houses we were buying. One of them was in the four hundreds and one was in the six hundreds, so one was remodeled, one was not.
And that was the price on them?
That's correct.
And they have bigger lots than almost any lots in Franklin.
You're going to, you're going to find these lots, lot size anywhere in Franklin, so the land is very wonderful.
The only other question I had was, have we ever elevated a home yet?
What's that about a pink or a blue?
Here, bub.
Pardon?
There are a number of people who have elevated.
No, no.
We haven't paid for it.
Has the city paid for and elevated any homes?
No, we have not.
We've not, so, so that has not been started. We have not actually gone in to people's personal property and lifted their homes, but we have done other mitigation and other iss, we've done, we've done other things to help divert the water, and still are going to do some things, I'm sure. Okay.
I'll go back to my point, that this is really a basin issue rather than two-property issue.
Correct.
We're trying to solve all the water. How about number eighteen, amendment, memorandum of understanding between the city of Franklin Williamson County for breathalyzer test. Any question about that one? Any other business? We'll adjourn until seven o'clock.